All right, we're good to go. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item up on our agenda is to approve our agenda as presented. Does anybody have any additions or deletions to our agenda for tonight? So moved, I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda as presented.
So.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Want to ask a question.
Yes.
What's happened with changing that?
That is her mother. Her mother's on hospice care. So she's taken leave to take care of, she's a primary caregiver for, for her.
And I don't know the code.
She is a TA at South Clinton Elementary School in the exact same situation.
It's nice they can do that.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our financial report with Mr. Ray.
I'll try to be brief. We're in, so bear with me, I'm in three years, you know, we're going to get, wrap up 2019-20's audit, and we're in the current school fiscal year 2020-21, and then we're getting ready to start our budget for 2021-22, so this is an odd month for me, I'm thinking in three different years, so. Our first, first thing we have is the January financial statement for your review questions and final approval. There's nothing outside of the ordinary in January compared to this, this month last year. Property tax has come in as expected, sales tax come in as expected and budgeted, same with BEP. Expenditures are normal and reoccurring, nothing outside of the ordinary, other than what we discussed last time with our capital projects. The addition kind of coming into this school year, originally we had budgeted to finish by June 30th of 2020, and it did not. You've got the federal projects funds in there. Every, we've got several new grants, so I've had to modify our accounting system manually to write in the account numbers that reflect those grants. But generally speaking, those are reimbursement grants, we spend the money, we apply to get reimbursed. Cafeteria fund, we're holding steady, we've got a $15,000 surplus thus far, and that's on track to meet what I generally expect our surplus to be is in the $30,000 range, barring any major equipment purchases. In this financial statement, the only piece of equipment we've purchased is an ice maker for South Clinton Elementary. But I've applied for five grants for pieces of equipment that are on my five-year list, so we'll hopefully get that this year and be able to use some grant money to take care of cafeteria, our infrastructure. Are there any questions on the January financial statements?
All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve January financial report as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Quiney?
Yes.
Kim Bobble?
Yes.
Ronald Crowe?
Yes.
Joey Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on into our internal school funds audit.
I passed out a little packet to you, I, what I did was I just prepared a little memo to summarize the financial statements, and I copied the related pages that I thought would be of most interest. I can give you the hard copy of an audited financial statement if you request one, and I can email you one as well. I'll try, try to be quick here with my memo. Generally speaking, the purpose of your internal school funds is student-driven. If I always, anytime anybody asks me questions about inappropriate expenditure, if their answer is, I'm spending it on kids, my answer is, you're okay. It's the adults that mess up the mix with the internal school funds, but if you spend money on kids, we're okay. And that gets me to the first point, so I took it by school for Clinton Elementary's income statement. If you look at page 12, I'm going to skip page five and six, because those are, talk about the whole system. But if you look at page 12, the Clinton Elementary Schools income statement, I remember I said that the purpose of the fund is to spend on children, so when you see anything that's admin-related, I always try to calculate that as a, as a percentage of total revenue. Generally, you're looking at between two and 6%. Anything outside of that, I start asking questions, and they're easy questions. For example, South Clinton's, I think their admin was 12% of revenue, but that was related to some furniture fixtures that LeAnn had to purchase for COVID, so there's a reason for it. They weren't going out to dinner, are things that you might typically see in admin. So that explains, and the, and the ratios are good to look at because they can catch errors and omissions pretty quick. But everything looks normal and ordinary in those, and anything that was outside of kind of my comfort zone was explained. Your Board of Ed allocations, I do a, a real quick calculation, and I, I look at it as a percent of EP. The Board of Ed allocation is provided by a formula that we work on in Central Office, and what that does is fund the schools for some fines, fees, and dues, or fees that may not be collected by students, we fund that, and that's based on enrollment, first and foremost, and then economic need. So given that, it would make sense that North Clinton's Board of Ed allocation would be more per pupil than the other two schools. Again, you look at some ratios, and that points out some issues, or not, some questions that should be asked, and there were no, no questions that needed to be asked based on the ratios for this. I'd like to draw your attention to some of my smiley faces. What I like, what I, my favorite one honestly is the book fair and the library, I love the library, it's my favorite building in the school, or favorite room in the, in the buildings. But for, to go through what we went through starting in March, and so we didn't do any fundraising in March, April, May, if you look at the numbers by school, which is, is page 12 is Clinton Elementary, page 14 is, is North, and page 16 is South, you wouldn't have known we were in a COVID problem based on what those schools did with their fundraising. I also put some ratios in there for your nighttime reading in the memo. You know, the, the one I look at most is fundraising, is your profit margin. Anything less, or 50% or lower, is it worth doing that fundraiser? Well, then I ask the question, and, and the principals have talked about it with me. Not all fundraisers are designed to raise lots of money. Some of it's more student experience-related, like at North Clinton with the activities they do with the holidays. If you've ever been to North Clinton's carnival, it is more of a parent involvement than it is a fundraiser, so keep that in mind. I get accused of looking at the dollars a lot, but I do understand there's more to it than just profit margin. But given that, our profit margin's still good, they do a good job with their fundraising. We started a couple new restricted funds, art and music at each school, because the level of activity that each of those teachers were, were getting involved in was extensive based upon what we used to do in prior years, so it was easier to account for that if we set them up kind of their own little restricted fund within the internal school funds. And you can look at that by school and see what, what our art teachers and our music teachers are doing, money-wise. And the book fair and the library, those have, have been there as a, as a restricted fund since I've been here, and they always do a great job with fundraising. But now for the bad news, and this is my fault, so I can't, in my summary, I didn't summarize the bad news. If you turn to page 21, it's the schedule of findings and responses. We had three findings, and these are written findings. The first one is on receipts. We missed a, a three-day deposit. It's important, but it's not a hill I'm going to die on. We can stress it and emphasize it, but life happens, people get sick, we get a snow day, somebody's having to cover, cover another position at a school, and they can't make it to the bank, I get it. The auditors don't look at those ancillary things, they look at, did you make it in three days? But I, we do understand at Central Office that things happen. But nonetheless, we strive for that, to follow that rule. And mainly, you know, that, I look at to why do they have the rule, and it's really not written for what we do. That rule is written for the football gate of $20,000 that sits in a coach's car over the weekend, and then Monday morning, when he comes in, he says, whoops, where'd the money go? It winds up missing. It's not meant for generally what we do, but nonetheless, we have to follow that rule.
I can speak to that rule, it's almost impossible. You've got teachers that have to start with students, and kids throwing money at them, and.
I agree.
It's impossible.
I agree, and that's why I said we can strive towards it, we can work towards it, and we try to help, but I, I can't dismiss it as, as we, ah, don't worry about it, I think because it is an audit issue, all we can do is try. On the disbursements, we need to just work on documenting an invoice when it comes in, where the goods received, some basic things that, and the hustle bustle, and given that, generally speaking, your school secretaries at each school pretty much know what's going on, they've got their thumb on, on everything, they know when things come in, but you need to get a teacher's signature on a piece of paper. And then the last one is purchase orders, and I can tell you generally what happens here is that people try to combine going to Walmart, going to Target, and going to Kroger. You're supposed to get a purchase order if it's above $100. Well, if it's $50 at each store, that's that gray area, you spent 150, but it's not over $100 individually, so we're just going to state that if it's over $100 collectively, individually, just open up a PO, it's just easier. And those are really kind of my responsibility to, to make sure that those things happen and to work towards it, so honestly, I did not even discuss with the auditors, they give me instances, like this happened once or twice, I didn't even ask which school, I didn't want to know. We can all learn from each other's mistakes, and so we didn't, there's no reason to call anybody out, so, but we're working towards it. I don't think those written findings affect the accuracy or the completeness of the financial statements, so we're going to work towards them, but it's not a hill I'm going to die on. Are there any questions on that?
Am I doing too time, Lori Collins?
Okay. So it'd be my recommendation that you approve the audited internal school fund financial statements for 2019-20 year end.
All right, we have a recommendation to approve the internal school audit. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further questions or comments regarding our internal school audits? Hearing none, I'll entertain a roll call vote, please, Kim?
David Quiney?
Yes.
Kim Bobble?
Yes.
Ronald Crowe?
Yes.
Joey Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to Board of Education audit.
I didn't give you all a handout, which is a little odd, I gave you 10 pages on $100,000, and I'm giving you zero pages on $10 million. This is available online, and if, I know you guys are going to want a hard copy, so you can get that as well. I would be happy to sit down and discuss anything that's in here with you, but I'm going to just give you some highlights. We didn't have, Gail Cook prepares the comprehensive annual financial report called the CAFER. She gets an award every year based on meeting certain standards from the Government Audit Association, and that is, it's pretty strict, and so she does a really good job. We had no written findings or verbal issues that were related to us regarding the Board of Ed audit. So given that, just some highlights, Suzanne, cover your ears, we have, at June 30th, 2020, we have $4.6 million in cash. Two million of that's debt, so that nets out to a free cash of $2.6 million. Our fund, I always say you can't spend fund balance, you can only spend cash. We have a fund balance of $5.2 million, so, you know, some of that's borrowed, obviously, our debt, but generally speaking, you know, I look at our fund balances $2.6 million, that's, that's what our free cash is. If we were to close up shop, sell the buildings, stop becoming a school, liquidate, we'd have $2.6 million in cash, assuming the buildings have no value. Our revenues, we, we had a fund balance at the beginning, they were $4.37 million, and we had an $845,000 surplus for 2019-20 school year. Now remember, a lot of that is $1 million of loan that got transferred, some of that got transferred in from the city, about $630,000 of that got transferred in from the city because that's what we had spent on the capital project, so we, we're not reducing expenditures so we can hoard. It sounds like that with an $845,000 surplus, but you got to remember that reflects debt and our capital project. Federal projects, nothing exciting, we had about $450,000 in grant money. Now, in the context of what that looks like this year, you could probably triple that this year, that's how much funding we're going to get due to COVID and ESAR 1.0.
With restrictions.
With some restrictions.
It has restrictions on it, yep.
But it kind of puts things in perspective, we're at $450,000 in federal grant money for 2020. So we had, where we, where we stand now, always from a cash flow perspective, you know, in January, we're at $4.4 million in cash, less, less our debt, so we're still at $2.4 million as, in January of 2021. So that tells me that, you know, our property tax. Our property tax is coming in as we expect, our, our sales tax is coming in in a timely manner. The greatest thing I can point out is, you know, in our January financial statements for federal projects is how quickly we get reimbursed. We did our, we did our December reimbursement so quickly that we got the money in January, and usually we get that and we do the reimbursement request in January, get it in February. We did it in December, got the money in January. We didn't have much revenue for January in federal projects, cash flow coming in. But our expenditures over revenue was about two days' worth of expenditure, so to have a two days of a receivable in a month is very good, usually we're at 30 to 45 days. So we're getting our money quick from the government, and you probably know why, that time of year is a good time to just get it quickly before things come up. And any questions on the audit?
Yep, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve and accept the Board of Education audit.
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Quiney?
Yes.
Kim Bobble?
Yes.
Ronald Crowe?
Yes.
Joey Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to, and thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, first item up is to approve on first and second reading, testing programs, policy, which I think it just has a minor change to what we had before.
Yes, we just simply added one statement in there, based on the education special session. In the past, we had to designate between a range of what we would, what we would require the 10 ready student scores to be a part of their final grade if we received the scores 10 days before we issued grades. We've never received the scores 10 days before we issued grades, but we still had to follow that policy. But because of the hold harmless bill that, that they enacted in the special session, we had the ability to change that to zero. So since we have that ability, I don't foresee that we would even get the test scores back within that 10-day timeframe, but just in case, given the fact of the multitude quarantines, isolations, and things that we have dealt with this year, it would not be fair to require that to be a part of a student's final grade, so we just put a clause in there that for the 2021 school year, that even if the test scores come back in time, they will not be a part of a student's final grade.
Any questions for Kelly regarding testing programs 4.7? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve on first and second reading revised policy for testing programs.
So moved.
Do we have a motion and a second, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Moving on is to request a state waiver for the HMH ELA textbooks.
So also part of the special session that the governor held included the approval of a literacy bill, and this was a revision of the literacy bill that they started in last year's session, and then due to COVID, it kind of got dropped off and got, it got amended, and some of the things that got amended were, were very, in a, in a good direction. However, in the past, we've always said that we could, that we have to by law adopt textbooks, but we do not have to purchase textbooks, and that's always been the way the law has written. So last year, it was ELA, or English Language Arts Adoption Year, and so our textbook committee got together, and we decided that we would not purchase at this time, and we did a blanket adoption, and so that means that we adopted all of the, all of the textbooks that were on the list, but we did not feel the need to purchase at that time, especially given with school closures and everything we were dealing with with COVID. In the state law now, the way that it is written is by 2023, we are required now by law to purchase something on that most current adoption list. And so the textbook committee looked, and we had several to choose from. HMH is Hope and Mifflin, they are a well-known textbook, textbook vendor, they actually are the one, they're, they're the vendor that we use right now for Journeys, which is the one that we use currently. This is an updated one that is called Into Reading. As part of the adoption process last year, they approved at the state level K through two, and then four through six, but third grade did not make the cut for their adoption. And it actually had a lot of controversy behind it, in fact, Commissioner Schwinn was taken off of the textbook commission out of worry that we were showing favoritism to some vendors. HMH has filed suit against the Department of Ed, I think it has since been dropped. But when multiple districts across the state have applied for a waiver for the third grade, all of those have been granted by the Department of Ed. Suzie and Lori did a thorough investigation, and some of the national research centers have given it very high ratings. The things that they said were not included in there, we have snapshotted, and they are in there, which was a vocabulary routine, and it was, it was in there, so I'm not quite sure how it got missed. But I've spoken directly to Lisa Coons at the Department of Ed, it will go to them, they will approve, and then the state board will approve, we have no reason to feel like that they will not do that, and we do feel like that it's a quality, a quality program, and we've spoken to some of the districts that have implemented it this year, and they've been very, very impressed with it. I cannot request for a state waiver without your permission, so that is why it is placed on the school board agenda this evening.
Okay. Any further questions for Kelly? All right, hearing none, we'll approve a request for state waiver for third grade HMH ELA textbooks.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Moving on, we'll have our COVID stipend for our certified and classified employees.
Okay, so in January, as you know, you all voted as a board to take money from our general purpose funds to reward the staff for the wonderful job that they have done in the reopening of schools. We knew that, that the governor was discussing an increase in teacher salaries, and that was discussed, and it was passed in special legi, special session a few weeks ago. What the governor is saying is that he placed a 2% raise retroactive to January the 1st on the instructional component of BEP. So you have to kind of break that down and what that looks like once it gets filtered into the schools. This is also the first time in state law that it has been said that you have to spend it in a certain way. Up to this point, BEP is, BEP is a, is a funding formula, not a spending formula, but he, this is basically kind of a different pot of money, but they use the BEP formula to determine what the amounts were. So the law states that this can only be used for instructional certified staff and school nurses. And so to put it into context, we weren't really sure what that, what that amount was going to look like, but when we did the raise for our staff in January, which was very well-received and did wonders for morale, right Lauren Murphy? That cost us roughly $160,000 out of GP to implement that bonus that we gave them in January. We got the allocation from the state, and it was $44,000, $44,500.
That's terrible.
And so that was pre-taxist, so as you know, when you give a bonus, you've got to put TCRS and Social Security and Medicare, our portion on top of that, so, so I actually took it to Scott Ray and said, see what we can, see what we can do with this. And I'll just tell a funny story, as he came back with a piece of paper with it written at the top, that every staff member was going to be able to buy a, a package of one ply toilet paper. And so, so, but he, he, he went as high as he could go with it, and so what we did is we, we've landed on a $450 one-time bonus. It can't be reoccurring because they did not roll it into the BEP like we thought he was going to do. Now, what Governor Lee has promised is that with this next budget, that he's going to do a 4% increase on the instructional component, which if he does, we are going to celebrate, and we will certainly look at, look at our teacher salaries, but, you know, he promised that last year as well, and then in June, it got dropped 2%, and then it got dropped to nothing, so we can't really go on a promise because at this point, that is proposed. So that's why it has to be a one-time bonus instead of rolled into actually teacher salary because this is one-time money, it is not reoccurring. But we also know at Clinton City that we don't do for one group what we don't do for another. You know, our custodians, our class, our secretaries, our teaching assistants have worked diligently just as well as certified teachers, and it has taken everybody to pull off what we have done at Clinton City Schools this year. And so what Scott did is he used the exact same formula that we used in January, looking at the median salary on the teacher salary schedule and the TA salary schedule, and so what that has tapped out is we will use that $44,500 from the state to address certified staff, it's going to cost us a little bit more than that from GP that we'll just absorb in GP, to do a $450 one-time bonus to be paid out in March, and then we're going to do a 225 for all classified staff members, and we are going to use our SR 2.0 money. If you remember, that's the second federal COVID money that we have gotten, and we are wording it a little bit different as it is going to be a stop-in for COVID-related additional duties such as taking temperatures and, and covering classes and, and doing all of those things, but we will take those funds from our SR 2.0 so that everyone, once again, gets a spring bonus for the quality work that they have done. We were, as I, as we have talked about, and I know you all would agree, teachers deserve so much more, and there is really no amount of money that I think we could put in their plates to reward them for the wonderful job that they have done this year, classified and certified. It has taken us all in the level of dedication, professionalism, and positive attitudes, flexibility that we have seen, there is honestly no amount of money that we could pay them for what they've pulled off for our children this year. So while I appreciate every little bit that comes their way, we were certainly hopeful that that would have made a larger impact, so. So very thankful to the school board for, um, having the insight and the, and the dedication to do and what we did in January. So this just, this can just be another, another round for them in March. So any questions regarding that?
Yeah, I think I was with you. I was expecting the state to come through with many times what we.
What is the state calling this? Cause it's obviously not a salary increase as they've called it.
I think.
What are they calling it?
They're calling it a teacher raise.
Teacher raise.
But it's not a teacher raise.
It's not a teacher raise.
It can't be because it's not reoccurring.
Well, I just wonder how much longer these people are here gonna put up with it? That's my question that I would be asking somebody. How much longer are they gonna, are they gonna put up with being smacked in the face? I mean.
And if I remember right, originally, this was to be spread out over three months? Was it three months?
Four hundred and fifty.
The four hundred and fifty minus taxes, so it would be like.
They're giving it to us. We're not receiving it in one lifetime. We're receiving it in five installments, which of course, we're not going to spread that out to teachers over five installments. That would be nothing. Um, we'll just go ahead and, you know, we're going to go ahead and pay it out. But, um, but, you know, I think Rick, if you look retroactive, you know, I think he, certainly, I will take anything that we can get for teachers. But if you, if you recall, back last year, we were going to do a 4% raise, and then all of that got taken away. And then now we're celebrating a 2% one-time funds with the promise of a 4% next year. But that really just retro, gets us to back to where we should have been a year ago with, with teacher salaries. So, um, I know David and I had a conversation. From our end, we will remain committed, and it's a hard conversation to have because when you have these S R federal funds coming down, you know, we can't use those for salary enhancement because that's one-time money. And, um, so we're trying to, we, we are committed to looking at teacher salaries in some capacity regardless of what the, regardless of what the, um, the governor decides to do with his budget because we, we will not go two years in a row without addressing the salary schedule. We just can't.
And that, and that's one thing I, I hope the general public understands is even though our revenue on the federal side through all of these COVID stimulus packages and things like that, federal money comes with so many ties, and you have to spend it on exactly what they tell you you can spend it on. And so even though we may have a, as Scott said, you know, three to four times increase in what our federal funds are, if we can't give it to a teacher, or we can't spend it in an area where our needs may be greater, um, our hands are tied. And I, and I hope the public understands that, you know.
Well, you can't give a reoccurring raise with one-time money because when that money comes out, you've got to find the money somewhere, and we, we couldn't guarantee that we would have that money.
No, but we can sure brag from the state of Tennessee that we've got a rainy day fund of $1.5 billion. And we only give these people what we, what they're giving them. I mean, I'm telling you, I don't know how much longer, if I was you, I wouldn't put up with it.
They do.
I know, I mean, I would. All of them, all of them back there have a voice. All of them back there have a voice.
They do agree with you.
And I assume most of them vote.
Yep.
That's my, that's what, that's, that's what I tell you. That's from me.
Teachers have never received the pay that they deserve.
No, not ever since I've been involved.
No, but we certainly, especially given what they have done this year, uh, from a just personal and professional level, uh, I was very, very disappointed that that's what it equated to.
See, if you get, if you're out in the community and you listen to the people in the community talk, they think they got a huge raise. They think these people are here got a huge raise. They don't understand. They didn't get nothing. But a smack in the face, basically. So that's the, that's the point behind it, is the, what our people in this community think they got a huge raise, then when we come along and ask for something, why are you doing that? They just got a huge raise. So, there you go. That's why I said they got a voice. They ought to be voicing their opinion.
Agreed.
I'll stand with them.
All right. Any further comments on approval for the COVID stipend? I do, I do greatly appreciate our ability to, teachers put out so much, but, you know, we can't forget the janitors. We can't forget the teaching assistants because if, if you take one group out of the equation, we fail. And, and that's what I wish the state would understand is that it is a group effort on all levels with great appreciation from the board. They should all be included in funding that comes our way rather than just one, one group.
Correct.
Um, but anyway, aside from that, we'll go ahead, and I will approve a motion to approve the.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further questions, questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on, we'll go to the N I E T scope of services.
Okay. N I E T stands for the National Institute of Excellence in Teaching, and the State Department of Tennessee has had a longstanding partnership with them. They are the ones who have developed our instructional rubric. They've done our teacher training on observations. Um, and in fact, they were the key component of, Lori went straight to them and used all of their resources with our reopening plan and with our think tanks that we used with our staff to try to get schools back open. They were a key component in helping us, um, open schools safely. Um, the Tennessee has, they have, um, stopped their partnership with, um, with N I E T and have kind of gone a different direction, but we have experienced great success with N I E T. We partnered with them on several professional development sessions this year, which we got good, um, feedback from the staff, um, regarding, um, what they had to offer. And we know that coming off of a pandemic, Clinton City Schools has not looked like Clinton City Schools this year. I mean, while we've tried to remain our focus on academics, we've also had to focus on mitigation efforts and social and emotional needs and, and, uh, you know, social distancing and quarantines and virtual teaching and brick and mortar teaching. And it has just been a year like we've never seen. But at some point, life is going to get back to normal, and we've got to kind of reestablish our baseline as Clinton City Schools and get back to academics and, and really take a hard look at student work and academic gaps and what's missing and what do our next steps strategically need to be to keep us on top. And so we are using, or I'm requesting to use $33,000 of our S R 2.0 funds. So these would be our federal funds that we would be using to enter into a formal partnership with them next year so that we could work side by side along with some national experts to help make sure that we get back, um, where we need to be.
I think that's a great idea and, and, uh, great thought looking ahead into the future for our needs that are coming down the road. So my hat's off to Central Office for that. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve N I E T scope of services.
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a motion? Motion in a second. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to approve a contract with Express Employment Professionals.
Okay. Express Employment Professionals is located here in Clinton. Um, Angie is a member of the chamber and with, with us in Rotary. Uh, they are a temporary employment service, and what we are running into is we just are having a very difficult time finding quality applicants for the custodial positions within the school. And as we know, this is a time where, uh, our custodians are a key component in keeping our school buildings open. Um, and so we have sought out, and Scott has had some conversations with her. And Scott, I'll kind of let you speak a little bit to the conversations you have had with her. But we would like to enter into a contract with her that, it doesn't cost us anything to enter into this contract. It would just be if we have the need and there is a hole that we need to fill, she could help send someone temporary to, uh, make sure that, that our buildings remain, remain clean. So Scott, do you kind of want to speak just briefly, Reader's Digest version?
I'll try.
Do you like how I gave you that cue right there, Reader's Digest version?
Well, there's some language in their contract that I crossed out, so we're going back and forth with that. Basically, um, if they provide an employee that we approve, um, and they work for 90 days for us, they're express as employee to contract its service, we pay them an hourly rate, which I'm assuming is built up for some profit for them. And then after 90 days, we have the option to hire the employee, pull them into our payroll. And that thus ends our relationship with Express Employment Services. Some of the contract language that I'm working with, it had some clauses in there that we had to compensate them a certain amount of money if we hired the employee. So I'm working on that. I don't think it's going to be a, a deal breaker.
Will it be N C M?
I'm hoping it will be N C M. But I don't want, I don't like surprises, you know. I think, you know, you, I don't think it's enforceable. You can't restrict people's employment. Um, so in any event, I think it's a good deal for us. Um, we have hired the one, we're working on another high school student from, uh, Anderson County, trying to help fill in the gap for the cleaning, um, very just custodial, not maintenance-oriented. And then, uh, so hopefully between Express and these high school, uh, seniors, junior and senior, we can really fill in those gaps. Um, I think one of the contributing factors, um, other than they have to work for me, I guess, is, uh, unemployment. And they've extended it, I think, through September.
We advertised, um, in the Clinton Courier, Knoxville New Sentinel, online, social media, and after three weeks, we had zero applications. So this is just, you know, we, we don't, I want to be clear, we never want to outsource our custodial work. That's not the intent of this at all because they are, they are very much a part of us, and you've got to have that ownership and that buy-in that these are your kids and your community. So we will never move away from that. This is just a safety net for us to go to in a situation such as this where we need some temporary people to come in and help fill some gaps.
Is it posted in the schools?
But what, like.
The needing a janitor, I mean, the, the job.
We don't have a sign in the schools, but we put it.
I think you might get better turnout with that because people, you know, thinking needing a job.
Yeah.
They might.
We've, we've used social media, but we've not.
Advertising on Facebook, right?
We've done Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Clinton Courier.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea. Just put it on the outside of the doors.
Yeah, I put it on the outside.
Because kids, nobody's allowed in right now.
Yeah. But, I mean, this would be a vector for us to find a quality, uh, janitorial candidate for our future employment down the road.
I just saw, I think it must have been Facebook. It could have been, I've got a couple of things that go on, somebody in Clinton looking for a job.
I saw that too. No, fast food.
To do fast food.
I saw that as well.
This is, this is a good job.
Yeah, it's a great job. It's a great job.
I mean, we have, we're not going to lower our standards from, from our perspective. We can't lower the standards to gain more people. So, um, I think, um, we don't want to. So we'll struggle through it. We'll survive, but, uh, just a little more work sometimes on our end downstairs, but.
It's okay.
All right. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract as presented.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to, uh, information, reports from principals and supervisors.
Okay. Before we get to principals, we have a special guest with us that's in the house today, Ms. Laura Roberts, our coordinated school health person is here today, and she has some, um, wonderful news to share with you all regarding our coordinated school health program and our annual health assessments that she has done. And so I've asked her to do a one-page, uh, summary and then to tell us a little bit about coordinated school health and where Clinton City Schools stands. So welcome, Laura Roberts.
Thank you. Um, I've been the coordinator of school health for about three years. Um, it was established 10 years ago to improve student health. Um, it's a state-funded position through grants. I work with the administration, P E, guidance, counselors, nurses, and the teachers to help improve the overall physical, emotional, and social health, which leads to improvement in the academic standards. Um, what I wanted to focus on is our yearly health screenings. Each year, we are required to do, to screen K two, four, and six. We do height, weight, blood pressure, uh, vision and hearing. What the height and weight give us their BMIs. And what we have found is that, uh, we had fewer students this year. We only had 330, but that's still quite a good chunk of our fourth, um, our even years. We are above the state averages, which is a great thing. Um, our students that are in the normal weight range is about 64% compared to 57% on the state. Our obesity rate is about 5% less than the state. But the good thing is that the state sets up five different categories, and we were right in the middle in the, in the, um, 39 to 43% on our BMIs. And this year, we've dropped down into a lower category. So we're celebrating that. And some of the things that have done that, our supports has been, our, all of our different Blaze physical activities are helping that. We do running club. We've had kickball at South Clinton. Our teachers are still using Go Noodle. Um, our Blaze Band Orf Ukulele Club, which I left off, exceptional artists in Reader, Reader Society is helping those social skills and those emotional skills, which is making them feel better so they're more likely to get out and exercise. Um, we do Club Health, which teaches them about different foods they can try. It get, it kind of expands their ability to, their desires to try something new that they've never tried before. Um, the Anderson County Health Department in the past has done micro clinic with us. Um, we weren't able to do that this year and last year. They're a little busy, but we have done that in the past. Best Groups has been a great thing because it teach, it gives our students the tools they need to express how they feel dealing with trauma. And that has been something that has been so important for our emotional health of our students. Um, our leadership is, our leadership in our schools has been awesome because they've, they've really started taking that role, and they're taking it, and they're putting up posters about bullying. They're putting up posters about, um, just drinking more water. And right now, they're doing, ours at Clinton Elementary is doing can drives, and they're going to take those cans to the blessing boxes around town. So they're really, our leadership has really grown, and they're starting to embrace the, and helping the community, and they're giving back. And I think that's a wonderful thing for them. Um, some things we have done for family engagement is we did the Clinton 5K. It was virtual this year, but we still did it. And we still had participation, even though it wasn't as much, but we still had the highest group participation. Um, we did a Zoom meeting last Tuesday night on navigating the digital world. It was presented by Street Hope Tennessee, and we're hoping to partner with them more in the future. Um, to give, one of the things that they addressed was that parents are not as technology literate as our students are, especially all the number of grandparents that we have raising our kids.
I can raise my hand on that.
And it was an excellent thing of pointers, websites that are dangerous, just things about who, no, realizing who you're sharing information with. Um, we do hope to be able to do that in the future. Um, another thing is in March, we have scheduled, we've met with, um, the Mental Health Association of East Tennessee, and we're going to do a Zoom meeting that gives parents and teachers ways that they can help students with depression and anxiety. And a report that I think you're going to give them that.
They have it.
Okay. The report that came out from Vanderbilt that Kelly gave you stated that 22% statewide parents are concerned because they don't know how to help their kids with the anxiety of COVID and the depression that comes with it. So when that came out, I just got it yesterday, and we'd already, we were already ahead of the curve in planning how to take care of our kids. Um, the other thing we've done is we are doing some things this year to take care of our staff because our staff are tired, they're stressed, they're taking on the depression and anxiety of their students. So we did, um, we did some exercise little things to get ready for the 5K, whether it be running or exercising. Um, we are continuing this year with yoga. It meets once a week, and it's free for our teachers. Um, we have done a water challenge just to make sure that their. We have done a water challenge, just to make sure that they're drinking their water and staying hydrated. And then we're, we did a 12 Days of Christmas Wellness, that let them kind of choose, and it was things as simple as, say no to one thing. You don't have to be, be all, do all. Take a night and don't take home anything from work. So we tried to just do some things that were fun. We've got another one coming in March, and they're going to have an option of fitness, wellness, emotional, or a combination, and it's a bingo board. And it's just something that's supposed to get them to think, I need to take care of myself, because I can't pour into my kids if I'm empty. So that's some things we're doing with coordinated school health this year, and we're very excited about it.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
She's done a, this is, how many, this is your third year? Is that what you said? She's, she's done a very nice job in this. She's got great community relationships with the area coordinated school health people, with the Health Department, and she has taken this program and run with it, and we appreciate all that she has done. The report that she gave you from Vanderbilt, it is a, it is very eye-opening with the, with what the pandemic has done to our, with our children, with regards to hunger, with regards to educational gaps. Very easy to read, but as you read through there, it's going to really highlight the good work that our staff at Clinton City Schools has done with our serving of the meals that we did over school closings, and, and just how we have taken the, the approach of loving them first this year. So when I read the report, it made me feel really, really good about what the, what kind of supports our staff has put into place for our kiddos this year. All right, so I've asked principals, I knew this would be kind of a lengthy meeting with Scott Ray and his financial, with his financial reports. So I've asked them just to come up and highlight, we have announced our Teacher of the Year, and so I've asked each one of them to come up and tell us a little bit about the, the Teacher of the Year, and announce who those are for their school. So we'll start with you, Ms. Sharp.
I can't promise this will be too short, but I'll try to condense everything I have to say. So overwhelmingly, our Teacher of the Year this year was kindergarten teacher, Ms. McCamus. She, to know her honestly is to love her. She works hard, she stays late, there is not one child in her classroom, she never just says, oh, it will be. She tries and tries and tries until she reaches that child. But we asked some of her colleagues, some of her kids, what they thought about her, and some of them said, she is a light and always encouraging, bubbly, fun, happy, caring, kind, loving, thoughtful. She truly cares about the kids, knowing right from wrong, and teaches them how to be a good person. She's the perfect kindergarten teacher, she's a saint, she's beyond patient, she's intentional and truly cares about others, and she's a comedian, the one you want to hear a story from at the end of the day. So I think you can see a pattern, that's a true testament to her personality, and just the type of person she is. And then her kids say, the kids say she's funny, she's nice, she's pretty, and one said she was thoughtful, and even can be strict about getting your work done. So Clinton Elementary School certainly appreciates Ms. McCamus and everything that she's done for our kids, so, thank you.
Thank you. And she is, she just lights up the room. She is just one of those genuine-hearted people that just, this is her mission field, and that certainly shines. All right, Ms. Bone Steel, come up and tell us about South Clinton.
Hi. So our Teacher of the Year this year is Rebecca Sharp. She's a fifth-grade teacher at South Clinton Elementary, and this is her ninth year with us. And I can truly say that if our hashtag for this year at Clinton City Schools is Love Them First, she's been living that out throughout her nine years at South Clinton Elementary. She is the most patient, caring person that I think I've ever come into contact with. Frequently, I am seeing pictures from parents on Facebook where she has attended birthday celebrations, soccer games, basketball games, karate ceremonies where kids are getting their new color belts. I mean, she is always there, just showing her kids that she cares about them as a person, and she gets to know them as, so much more than just a student in her classroom, but she cares about what they care about. And I think the kids that some of us would look at and say are the hardest-to-love kids, she's able to make connections with those kids like nobody else. She's always willing to jump in and do whatever needs to be done without you even having to ask. She's the first one to cover somebody's morning duty, or to go out on the hill and cover dismissal duty in the rain, or to set up a meal train for somebody who is sick or has had surgery. She is the coach of the Blaze Dance Team, she takes over Veterans Day celebrations, she collaborates with everybody, so she's just a friend to all, but I would say especially to her students in her classroom.
Very good, thank you. And Ms. Bone Steel, you're not done yet, stay, 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 stay. Rebecca, I have to tell you that she was our very first teacher that had the joy of figuring out how to teach virtual and brick-and-mortar at the same time. And while that, if I were in her shoes, would have been a very overwhelming, stressful, my type A would have definitely kicked in, and I would have had to have all the answers before jumping in. She just, we're going to figure it out, we're going to figure, and by golly, she did, and then she was able to really help us learn a lot of lessons through that experience, as other, almost every teacher in our district now has had to do that to some capacity, but she was kind of our first, and she just jumped in headfirst with such a positive attitude that she was just going to do whatever it took to take care of her kids.
And on that note, I can say, you know, she had more than half of her class that was virtual, and her kids were online, tuned in every single day and every single time that she told them to. And if that doesn't tell you how much they love their teacher, I don't know what does.
Yeah, relationships matter. Relationships matter. So while she is standing here, Leanne Bone Steel is our Principal of the Year for Clinton Elementary School. And so I don't, you all know Leanne and know what quality she is, but she has done a phenomenal job of, at South Clinton Elementary School. Her staff, she's highly respected. I think one of the things that I enjoy most about Leanne is that she, she is always, what you see right now is what you get, no matter what. I mean, she is always just calm and even keel in every situation. She doesn't speak quickly, unlike me. She doesn't show lots of, you know, heightened emotions, she's very calm for her staff, she's very calm with parents, she works through conflict very thoughtfully, but she's also a true advocate for kids. The kids that a lot of people would give up on, she continues to work with and is positive. And I think the thing that I love most about her is, if you're in South Clinton Elementary, at the end of announcements, she ends her announcements every single day saying, and if no one tells you before the end of the day that they love you, remember that Ms. Bone Steel loves you. And that just kind of summarizes how she cares for South Clinton Elementary and her kids. So congratulations on being our Principal of the Year. You are certainly quality stuff, and we're blessed to have you.
Thank you. I'm not sure my husband would agree about me being calm, and, you know, so if I can get that, you know, in writing, I save it all for him.
Well, you do well within the, within the confinements of Clinton City Schools. All right, Ms. Ryle, come up, tell us about North Clinton.
Well, I have a fabulous teacher at North Clinton Elementary School. She has only been with us for four years, and this is the second time that she has been nominated by her peers to be Teacher of the Year at our school. She started out her career working at Dollywood as in the marketing department, and worked at Virginia Tech and the College of Engineering. And then she trained, was a training director at a corporation called Sendant, and then decided crazily enough to leave all of that fabulous business world behind, get certified, and become a teacher. And she taught at Amherst in Knox County for 11 years, teaching fourth and fifth grade. She's only been with us for four years. She taught third grade, and then she taught for a couple of years, and then she taught fifth and sixth grade at ELA. In the four years she's been with us, the sixth-grade group that she has this year, she had them in third, then she had them as fifth-grade ELA and Social Studies, and now she has them again as sixth-grade ELA and Social Studies. She had told me at the end of the year that she had had this group with third grade, and they had some very specific challenges, and she said, you know what, but I love them so much. She said, I think I could even loop with them. Little did she know, she would be doing that two times. So be careful what you wish for. However, she, she and I have been working together, since she had been trained in the seven habits of highly successful people, and she did some training in the business world that way. She and I had worked on a leadership program with our fifth and sixth-grade students, and she has done a book study with them called Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. And she works with our fifth and sixth-grade students to really give back to the school and be a leader in their school community. So they do things like, they, of course, they work on yearbook, but they also do the second harvest backpacks that go home every week, they pack those up for kids, they pack all the birthday bags that go home with the students, they assist with special events. We had the virtual family engagement, and they got some things prepared for that, packed up little to-go bags and different things. But the most important thing to know about her is that she loves her children so very much, and she loves our little school, even in, in the very short time she's been there so very much. And she's also been told she cannot leave until I retire. So there.
Which is a very, very long time from now.
Yes, it is. Very long, very long. But we do, we love our Jill Smithson, she, she deserves every bit of it.
Jill, and what, we won't go into great detail, but she has, she has dealt with a fairly significant vision issue over the past year and a half, which has really, really impacted where a lot of people would have probably thrown their hands up and just said, I'm going to need to, need to take a leave, but she shows up every single day, and it, just the relationships, and how North Clinton, there is no doubt that people stay in sixth grade, just so that they can experience Jill Smithson another year, because her love for them is so unconditional, and just so genuinely pure. And not only that, she's an awesome instructor, makes wonderful gains with kids. So those are our Teachers of the Year, Principal of the Year, and then finally, our SRO of the Year is Officer Justin Byrd. He is our SRO at Clinton Elementary School. This is his second year with us, and there's been a little bit of smack talk between the SROs about this, about this award. It's never easy, it's never easy to give, because all three of our SROs, just like all of our teachers, are fabulous. But he is, he is our SRO this year. We hope that we get to keep all three of ours right now. I said this is probably one of the strongest cohorts of SROs that we have, so my hope is that we can rotate to all three and get to all three of them, because they are all three equally as deserving. But Justin Byrd is our SRO of the Year, and then we will be recognizing all of these in some capacity with the Education Foundation this spring. We are just unsure at this time about what that might look like. But that concludes our reports.
All right.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to bring something up under new business. Ms. Oliver wanted to, to ask us a question.
I'd like some funding.
And now it's time for Director's Report. So we'll just move right on into Director's Report.
I just failed to ask under new business. She asked me for, Ms. Oliver, would you come to the podium?
I think this is Robert's rules out of order, is it not? Are we not out of order right now? I think we are.
Well, she asked me a question, and-
I did. I asked you to, to secure some funding for us, for some sensory rooms, and some interactive hallways for each of our school buildings. All the children across the district would benefit. And I got a quote for it earlier today, and I brought it up to me, because I have brought in this year $40,000 in federal grant money, but as you pointed out earlier, it's all tied up, and you can't just spend it the way you want to, so I need for Mr. Ray to reach into his, his GP pocket and hand me some funds.
Have you made a request that's been denied by Mr. Ray?
Just a very brief one. I haven't really formalized it, so it hasn't yet been denied formally.
I think she was hoping to capitalize on her relationship with David Queener to catapult this, and maybe-
Well, we've catapulted it.
And maybe expedite it down to a faster fashion.
Maybe a little bit more than she wanted to.
Why don't we say that we will explore that this month, and we will report back in, in the March meeting? Is that fair, Ms. Oliver?
Thank you very much.
I look to having that report.
Mr. Queener, I'll have a full report for you.
We'll make sure that makes the agenda for discussion at our next board.
My opinion is to find the money.
Merle said, Scott needs to find the money. I agree with Merle.
Short arms and deep pockets.
I heard that.
I think you just got your request. Merle has spoken, David Queener has spoken.
All right. That fund, SR, whatever.
The SRO?
Yeah, it's, it's a one-time thing, right?
Esser.
Oh, Esser money, yes, yes, it's a one-time.
Is there money in that?
Yes, she, she will get, she'll get her sensory rooms, we're just giving her a hard time. We have to make her work forward a little bit.
It is worth it, get her up to the podium.
All right. Moving on, please take note, our next board meeting is March the 11th, right back here again. The Nashville meeting is coming up on Monday, and from that, we'll move on into our Director's Report.
Okay, some of this we have already talked about, and I know we're kind of going lengthy, so I won't spend a lot of time. But I did, Kim prepared some packets for you that should be at your table, that just go over the four pieces of legislation that were passed in the special-called education session with, back in January. It is just a summary of the different things that were passed, so I just will pass that off to you. I've tried to keep you updated via email about most of that, but that just gives you a reference sheet in case you're asked by a stakeholder along the way. With the learning loss bill that was passed, they are requiring a six-week full-day summer school. And without going into too much detail, the way that they outlined it in law is four hours of ELA instruction, one hour of RTI, which is Response to Intervention, and one hour of playtime, and then one hour of STREAM instruction, which is STEM with arts and reading. And so all of that is mandated for a seven-hour day program for six weeks. They kind of did not mention that teachers might need to eat, and kids might need to eat in that seven day, so that kind of makes it a seven-and-a-half-hour day, so that we can feed children. The funding does not necessarily include duty-free lunch or planned time, so we are going to use some of our Esser funds to supplement with some teaching assistance and some extra teachers to lower ratios, to make sure teachers have an hour planned time a day that they can have duty-free lunch. So we're working through that schedule. Teachers right now are showing their interest, but when we look, if we start on June the 7th and do a six-week program, that would mean that teachers who taught in that would get approximately a week and a half to two weeks off in the summer before they're required to come back and teach again for a full year. We know the teachers are tired, we know that teachers are stressed. It's also a huge commitment on behalf of parents who need summer school to commit to seven, or six weeks in the summer, as well with vacations and custody, visitations and things of that nature. So they're opening up a waiver process. I will tell you that every school that I'm aware of is going to put in a waiver of some kind, just to make it a little bit more doable, where we think we get a little bit more participation of kids and more participation of teachers, but we still have time for kids to have a little bit of a summer vacation, and teachers to have a little bit of time to refill their buckets, and we have time to frankly clean the schools as well. So I anticipate that we will be filing a waiver to turn that into a four-week summer school program, so that we can start that on June the 7th, and then be done by the July 4th holiday, which would still leave teachers some time to fill their buckets, and parents to go on vacations, and us to get the school building good and clean before school starts. They, the state has said that they will be approving waivers, and so I don't have any reason to believe that will not happen, but if for some reason it doesn't, we will find a way to make our six-week program work.
What kids are going to be going to that? Is that voluntary, or?
It is voluntary, yes. So we are mandated by law to offer it. It is voluntary, and there's a priority system, like a priority placement for kids, so we will invite our below-basic kids first, based on, since T and Ready won't be available, it'll be based on our ready results. So our below-basic kid or behind-grade-level kids will be offered that first, and then we'll move on up with the seats left with the approaching category, and then we'll continue to fill until we're at capacity. Boys and Girls Club is now running active in all three schools. They have officially gotten their clearance from safety guidelines, and they are officially a Boys and Girls Club at all three schools. Enrollment is growing, kids are excited about going. They will remain, the Clinton Community Center is going to continue to run their program for existing Clinton Elementary students until May, and then everything will transfer over into Boys and Girls Club. This is going to make David Queener's heart happy, but we piloted a program at North Clinton Elementary School, which has now been moved to Clinton Elementary, which next week will move to South Clinton Elementary, where Airmark is actually providing weekend food for kids in need. And so on Friday afternoons, they are packing up things that can be warmed up, heated up, or sandwiches, breakfast and lunch for the weekend, along with milk, and they're taking that home with them on Fridays. That has been hugely successful at North Clinton alone. I think we served 700 meals so far, Scott.
Six hundred.
600 meals so far.
Wow.
And so we started that at Clinton Elementary, we just kind of wanted to see if this was, if this was going to take off, and if they could do it, and they've done a great job doing it. So that will head to South Clinton very, very soon, next week, and then all three schools will have that opportunity for students who need food over the weekend. And I think after you read that Vanderbilt study, you'll be happy that we have partnered with Airmark to make that happen. Commissioner Schwinn indicated in a- Commissioner Schwinn indicated in a phone call this week that we are hopeful that Tennessee will move statewide into Phase 1B by the end of this month. 1B is the phase that teachers are in, so we are very hopeful that by the end of February or 1st of March, that our teachers should begin to see some vaccinations come their way. We are doing great with our COVID numbers. Hopefully, the spike between Christmas and Thanksgiving has, as we are past that point. Our quarantine, household quarantines have gone down significantly. We have a fairly large number, I think 15 kids are coming back on Monday, or Tuesday, rather, after President's Day. After that point is, is just a sporadic two and three kids coming back each day. So we are, I mean, when you look at the fact that at one point in January, we had quarantined over 120 kids at one time. And so we are doing much, much better with regards to COVID. We are knocking on wood and everything, hoping that it stays that way, but we certainly will continue our mitigation efforts through this school year until vaccinations are widespread. Clinton City Schools has partnered with the Tennessee Department of Education on a free family engagement app that's called Ready for K. Not real sure why it's called Ready for K, because it is for parents of pre-K through third-grade students. Parents were allowed to opt into that, which gave them several text messages, age-appropriate text messages throughout the week of family engagement and learning activities that they can do at home with their kids. We have had, as of today, 77 families have signed up for, for, to receive those text messages on those apps. And so we're excited to be able to offer that for free for our families. Your Teachers of the Year have been named there, just in case you get home and forget, there's a nice reference for you, and know that we will continue to celebrate them. And then just wanted to piggyback off of Laura Roberts about our Blaze Well-rounded activities. It was with high anxiety and lots of worry that we moved forward with those this year just due to COVID and mitigation, but we put some supports into place, and we thought we would at least try it, and if we needed to shut it down, we would, but we would give it a try. And it has just been a huge success. So far, we've pulled off cross-country, and Lauren Murphy, our basketball coach, is in the audience, and we were able to pull off a basketball season. It was a little shorter, and, but it was, it was a great season. The girls and boys had a great time. Currently, we are doing archery, and we're doing something else. What are we doing? Swimming. Archery and swimming right now with bowling and track to come in the spring, and then all of our other, the ORF ensemble, the band, the Reader Society, and all of those activities. Exceptional Artist Clubs are happening as well. So we are trying, when you read this report, to try to keep it as normal as we can for our kids and try to keep them engaged and let them see that there is an outlet beyond COVID. We could not do that without our donations from our community members. Mr. Stamey has done a tremendous job going out and seeking those donations to where we're not having to dip into instruction money quite so much, so we appreciate all the community people who continue to donate to our Blaze Well-rounded activities. Any questions for me? And that concludes my report.
Great things continue to happen at Clinton City Schools. Anything else to come before the board? Anything? All right, hearing none, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.